Trustee Mulaney.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radziewski.
Here.
Mayor Pecoff.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katzenis.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Katzenis.
Aye.
Trustee Radziewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Mulaney.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Veterans Commission Patriot Award, Therese Dubleby.
So, it is my honor to present to Therese Dubleby the Veterans Commission Patriot Award. And Dan, are you here as well? Okay, so you should probably come up too. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the, the stuff here and then add a few more comments. So, Therese retired from the Village of Orland Park after fifteen years of service. She taught elementary school for twenty years before going into business with her husband, Tom. Therese, who was also here tonight, Therese contributed, or continued to serve her community by serving on the Board of Directors of the Crisis Center for South Suburbia for nineteen years, helping women in need. She's further continued her commitment to public service over the years by assisting the Veterans Commission with the monthly Walmart collections, participating in the sorting and packaging of all the care packages sent to our troops overseas. I can tell you from personal experience that there's no one that gives more to the Village of Orland Park. She's given so much time, given so much time to the Veterans Commission, and is just such a classy lady. I can't, I can't express enough appreciation for myself, from the Board, and from the Village of Orland Park.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for agenda-specific public comment. Vince Kelly.
Good evening, Illinois.
Can you, can you hold on a second, please?
Sorry. Ladies and gentlemen, we now come to the public comment portion of our meeting. Each individual wishing to address the Board, Village Board will be allocated a maximum of three minutes. Before speaking, each person must clearly state their name for the record, and we request that you also provide your address. All comments must be made for the podium and directed to the Village Board as a whole. Comments should not be directed to individual Board members, Village staff, or other members of the public. We expect all speakers to conduct themselves in a respectful and orderly manner. Abusive, foul, obscene, threatening, or otherwise inappropriate language or conduct, including personal attacks, will not be permitted. Disruptions, loud outbursts, or statements made from the audience are also not permitted. The mayor may terminate the public comment session of any person who fails to adhere to these rules. Anyone who disrupts the meeting and prevents the Board from conducting its business may be subject to removal from the meeting room. Please note that the Board of Trustees will not engage in debate during public comment. While the Board generally does not respond to public remarks, the mayor or a trustee may choose to do so if deemed appropriate. We appreciate your cooperation and look forward to hearing from those who wish to speak.
Thank you. My name is Vince Kelly of one four six zero zero Silver Lake Drive, Orland Park, Illinois. I would like to thank the Board for showing up to work on Labor Day because it's not pencil pusher day. I heard your remarks about Labor Day and how it was a Marxist holiday, and how proud you were that you were going to work that day, and how noble it was of you. It was an insult to every American that ever put a shovel in the dirt, and I think that you should all be ashamed of yourselves for saying-
Um, sir, this isn't an agenda item, so you're, you're speaking about the, um, the storage project? If you want to speak about this, you can wait till the end of the meeting?
The storage part is great, and I'd also like to say it's a member of court record that members of this Board tried to have people, critics, fired from their jobs because they criticized members of this Board. It's a member of court document, and only a coward would do such an act. It's a terrible reprehensible act to try to have a terminally ill man-
Sir.
Sir.
This, are you talking about-
A terminally ill man fired from his job.
Storage project?
Yes, the storage project is great. I'm a big fan of storage.
So, then make, confine your comments to the storage project.
The storage project thinks it's terrible you tried to get a terminally ill man fired from his job. How's that? You all hitched your horse to the wrong wagon? When Jim Dodge does the audits that you wouldn't do, enjoy Club Fed. Don't drop the soap.
Thank you for your comments, whatever that is. Anybody else here to speak? Nobody else signed in?
Accounts payable, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five through April seventh, twenty twenty-five approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy. I moved to approve the accounts payable, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five through April seventh, two thousand twenty-five, in the amount of two million, three hundred ninety-six thousand, oh forty-two point oh two.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katzenis.
Aye.
Trustee Mulaney.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radziewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, payroll for March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five approval, payroll, and B, payroll for March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five approval. Item C, resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, salt storage facility. Item D, police department, evidence storage room project, RFP twenty-five zero zero seven contract award. Item E, T-Mobile lease agreement extensions on five elevated water towers with renewal terms to twenty fifty. Item F, Granicus, three-year contract extension for Granicus software renewal subscriptions. Item G, special event permit for Pete's Fresh Market Appreciation Event, one hundred and fifty to two hundred people per hour. Item H, special event permit for Darwin Furniture Tent Sale, two hundred people. Item A, special event permit for Orland Square Mall, June days, featuring Hello Kitty Cafe Truck, five hundred people. Item J, special event permit for Cirque Italia Theatrical Circus, three hundred, four hundred people per show. Item K, aquatic weed and aerator maintenance, change order three. And addendum D. Item L, turf fertilization weed control, notice of cancellation. Item M, fire system services maintenance agreement, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight. Item N, ITB twenty-three dash zero five four turf fertilization and weed control contract award. Item O, replacement of police vehicle purchase proposal. Item B, or item P, twenty twenty-five fall program list. Item Q, a resolution, a resolution adopting utility billing correction and refund policy for the Village of Orland Park. And item R, cleared gov digital budget book and capital budgeting platform annual subscription.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Mulaney.
Move to approve items A through R of the consent agenda.
Second.
Any comment? Call the roll.
Trustee Mulaney.
Aye.
Trustee Katzenis.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radziewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-five concrete flat work asphalt and sidewalk replacement program, RFP twenty-five dash zero two two bid award.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to waive the competitive bidding process in favor of the solicitation of competitive proposals and to approve and authorize the execution of a contractor agreement between Village of Orland Park and Dale Inc. of New Lenox, Illinois, as the lowest-cost qualified responsive proposal for the RFP twenty-five dash zero two two, twenty twenty-five concrete flat work asphalt and sidewalk replacement program, for a cost of two hundred sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars, plus a contingency of fifty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars, for a total not to exceed cost of three hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and forty, uh, five hundred and sixty-four dollars, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review, and authorize the village manager to approve change orders related to this contract within the authorized amount.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katzenis.
Aye.
Trustee Mulaney.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radziewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Special use permit for Honest Restaurant, nine one seven six through nine one seven eight, West one hundred and fifty-ninth Street.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Mulaney.
Regarding case number twenty twenty-five dash zero one two six, also known as special use permit for a restaurant, for Honest Restaurant, I move to approve the Plan Commission recommended action for this case, and I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, Ordinance granting a special use for a restaurant within three hundred feet of a residential property, Honest Restaurant, ninety-one seventy-six through ninety-one seventy-eight, West one hundred and fifty-ninth Street. Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Mulaney.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katzenis.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radziewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
A resolution approving the local public agency agreement for federal participation to be entered into by the Village of Orland Park and the Illinois Department of Transportation, and for the appropriation of village funds for the purpose of paying for the local agency share related to the construction of the John Humphrey Drive at one hundred and forty-third Street roadway intersection, improvements and dry land bridge expansion project under I dot project number F six GB three four eight, state job number C dash ninety-one dash two six one dash twenty-four, section number sixteen dash zero zero seven eight dash zero zero dash CH.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Radziewski.
I move to adopt a resolution entitled, A Resolution Approving the Local Public Agency Agreement for Federal Participation, to be entered into by the Village of Orland Park and the Illinois Department of Transportation, I dot, and for the appropriation of village funds for the purpose of paying for the local agency share related to the construction of the John Humphrey Drive at one hundred and forty-third Street roadway intersection improvements and dry land bridge expansion project under I dot project number F six GB three four eight, state job number C dash nine one dash two six one dash twenty-four, section number sixteen dash zero 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 seven eight dash zero zero dash CH.
Second.
And, uh, Krishi, could you tell us how much money we're getting in total for, um, from SDP funds for this project?
Mayor, we're getting four million dollars on a project of nine million, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
So, that's good work securing, um, these funds for that project, so I appreciate it. Um, always good when we can get, uh, and, you know, largely because we do our share of contributions, and other towns may not be able to do that, but, um, and make sure you thank our local, uh, program for, uh, I know they had to shift the money, uh, you know, shift the money, it was approved, but shifted to a different timeframe than was originally planned, so thank them for, for accommodating that. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Radziewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katzenis.
Aye.
Trustee Mulaney.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Day of Show Production, RFP twenty-five dash zero one four bid award.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Trustee Compass.
I move to approve and authorize the execution of a professional services agreement between the Village of Orland Park and Reich Entertainment as the qualified responsive proposal for RFP number twenty-five dash zero one four, Day of Show Production, to provide advance and day of show services for village special events for three years at a cost of eighty-four thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty cents for twenty twenty-five, eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty cents for twenty twenty-six, and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and two dollars and twenty cents in twenty twenty-seven, for a total not to exceed of two hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and ninety-one thou- dollars and forty cents, and to authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review, and authorize the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
Second. There any comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katzenis.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Mulaney.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radziewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Special Event Gate Staffing, RFP twenty-five dash zero one one bid award.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katzenis.
I move to approve and authorize the execution of a professional service agreement between the Village of Orland Park and Atlas, Atlas, Atlas Group, does business as Properties First, as the qualified responsive proposal for RFP number twenty-five dash zero one one, Special Event Gate Staffing, to provide special event staff for village special events for three years at a cost not to exceed, or cost of forty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars, plus a contingency of ten thousand for twenty twenty-five, forty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty, plus a contingency of ten thousand for twenty twenty-six, and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-five, plus a conting- contingency of ten thousand for twenty twenty-seven, for a total of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty cents, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review, and authorize the village manager to make change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
And before it's seconded, it's Otis Group, and also the, um, it is for a total not to exceed of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and nineteen twenty. Now, I'll-
That wasn't in there.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? So, this is for the private security that handles our, uh, all of our, uh, uh, screening coming in, um, and all of the metal detectors and everything we have to go through, and it frees up our officers for, for other things, and staff for other things as well. So, um, it's unfortunate, but in this day and age, we have to do this, and it's proven very effective to keep people safe out at the, uh, the venues. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Katzenis.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Mulaney.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radziewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Centennial Park Soccer Field One renovation reissue, ITV twenty-five dash oh two six bid award.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to approve and authorize the execution of a contractor agreement between the Village of Orland Park and VC Commercial Services LLC as the lowest-cost qualified responsive bid for ITV twenty-five dash zero two six, Centennial Park Soccer Field One renovation reissue, for the total not to exceed cost of eighty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars, forty cents, which is seventy-two thousand, seven sixteen, plus ten thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars and forty cent contingency.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katzenis.
Aye.
Trustee Mulaney.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radziewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
RFP twenty-five dash zero one nine, Centennial Park Infield Renovations.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve and authorize the execution of a contractor agreement between the Village of Orland Park and Midwest Field Solutions of Elk Grove, Illinois, as the lowest-cost qualified responsive proposal for RFP number twenty-five dash zero one nine, for a cost of eighty-one thousand, plus a twenty thousand dollar contingency for a total not to exceed amount of one hundred and one thousand dollars, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review, and authorize the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radziewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katzenis.
Aye.
Trustee Mulaney.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye. I, I will add, um, that, um, we hear a lot about, oh, these fields aren't maintained, and blah, 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 and so, well, they get masked, they get a lot of use, and so it's very difficult. The fact that we built Shushla Park has actually allowed us to take one or two fields off to renovate them now. So, over the next, you know, eight to ten years, we'll be able to do a couple of fields a year, so, um, so that's why, um, this is, that's why this is happening. So, um, that's another benefit of having those fields over at Shushla Park.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for public comment and items relevant to village business.
Uh, don't we have Centennial Park Infield renovations?
We might. Sorry.
Don't you show that Centennial Park?
Yes, we do. They got stuck together. My apologies.
That's okay. I'm glad I caught it.
Trust, uh-
Centennial Park Infield renovations.
It's not the one we just did? Or we just did the soccer field?
We just did the soccer field.
RFP twenty-five dash zero one nine, Centennial Park Infield Renovations.
We just did that. We did it. Oh. I did the soccer. I- Okay. And then- We're good? Okay. All right, my bad.
It's okay. So, non-scheduled citizens and visitors for agenda sp- or for non-agenda specific comments?
And the same comments from earlier apply. Um, I think everybody was in here, so, um, Carol McGurry. Reminder, you get three minutes.
Hi, I'm Carol McGurry. I am a resident for seventeen years of Orland Park, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you. Thank you to this Board. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for keeping us safe, Mayor, Mayor Pecoff and the trustees. Thank you for turning this city around. I know what you inherited. You made Board decisions transparent. You created a model for good governance. Now, the next Board can follow that, and I hope that they will. Let's hope they also follow the no-term limits and no pensions. You know what I really value about this Board is you're doing what good leaders do. You're leaving it better than when you took it over. That's what good leaders do. You're leaving us in better shape. You've established a strong foundation, so the next Board is inheriting a well-oiled machine. Thank you for saving our local businesses during COVID. Thank you for bringing in new businesses during really challenging times. It has not been easy. I know that. Thank you for investing in our previously neglected infrastructure, parks, roads. Thank you for building Centennial Park West, and doing all of this while managing and reducing astronomical debt. Thank you for taking the previous failed triangle project and making it a reality. I really look forward to seeing what happens there. Thank you for always putting the best interests of our citizens and the village before anything else. So, what I'm saying is, you have so much to be proud of. As you step away, so many of us truly appreciate everything that you've done to Mayor, to our Mayor Pecoff, to all of the trustees. You, you've done incredible leadership, stewardship, and are leaving a mark that's a positive one for all of us. And although several of you are staying on for the next Board, and your voices might be a minority, I know that you will continue to do your job with honesty and integrity as you have done before. But just keep an eye on things. Thank you all for the difference that you made for all of us.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak? Okay.
Board comments?
Board comments. So, I will let the Board know before your comments, he's gonna get to speak last. Brian Reardon will not be here for the last Board meeting because he has a commitment with his daughter. Um, so it'll be his, this will be his last Board meeting, so you can factor that into your comments.
I was hoping you wouldn't say that, Keith.
Sorry. That's the way it goes. Trustee Compass.
So, I wasn't going to have comments tonight, but I, I think, as I look out at the faces here, I do wanna say a few things, um, especially in light of, I think some of you may have come because of a lie or rumor that was spread that, honestly, you could have just looked up and understood a little bit more about the process and how things work here, and you would have known that it was a lie, that it was not true. But I went in on a, on a high note. To close out tonight, I do wanna take a moment, especially since I see so many friendly faces here, and thank everyone who's taken the time to engage over the past four years of my term, whether it was by attending this meeting in person, tuning in online, or just simply reaching out after an event to share your thoughts. When I first stepped into this role, I wasn't always sure who was watching, or if anyone actually was. But over time, I started hearing from so many of you, uh, the kind words, the questions, the conversations at local events. All of it reminded me that people were, in fact, paying attention, and that's crucial. That made, that made this work not just meaningful, but deeply fulfilling. This is a mantle of responsibility. There is no power, there's no money, there's nothing to be had here other than a sense of doing a good job for the village. I supported the installation of the cameras here in this room because it was important to have transparency in local government. I wish all local governments here had these cameras. There really is no reason, no good reason for them not to. It's important for you to keep coming out, keep holding people accountable, whether you agree with them or not, understand what's going on in your village. I thank you all for coming tonight. I thank for all of you that have watched me through the years, and especially those that have taken the time to reach out and let me know that you cared. Thank you all. Have a great and safe evening.
Trustee Mulaney.
Carol, thank you for your kind words, but yeah, we have two more years ahead of us still, so we're gonna continue to do the things. We're going to continue to do the things we have done in the past, except now you can hear me when I'm saying it. But, you know, that being said, you know, I think it'll be an interesting two years. I don't think we'll agree on everything, but we're gonna continue to do what's best, and that's what we can do for the residents of Orland Park. That's what we're here for, and that's what we'll continue to do. So, thank you for your thoughts. And Brian, thank you as well for the last four years. You've been an asset. You've helped us tremendously, especially with your vast legal knowledge. Seems we've needed that quite a bit lately. So, uh, you know, I wish you the best, and, uh, sorry, you won't be here next week, so, uh, thank you for everything. On a brighter note and a happier note, my special recreation update once again. You know, the, uh, the Owls Powerlifting Team competed at the district tournament on March twenty-ninth and thirtieth at Marmion, and, uh, they won five gold medals, nine silver medals, and five bronze medals. And three athletes are going to be advancing to the state summer games in June to represent the Owls. So, congratulations to the athletes that participated and earned their medals, but most importantly, thank you to all of the staff and the volunteers that helped with that. Thank you.
Trustee Katzenis.
Thank you. I too, I'm gonna be here for another two years with, uh, Trustee Mulaney and Trustee Healy. Our roles really won't change. We're gonna do what we were put here to do, look out for the best interests of the people we represent, the residents and businesses of Orland. I continue to do that, you know, we'll certainly, we all will try to work together. We have a common goal. We all want, want what's right for Orland Park, what's good for Orland Park. But sometimes you might see a little different way of getting there, and that's okay. You know, you can agree to disagree. But we are, we are truly blessed to have incredible residents. We have incredible staff that works for the village in all departments. Sometimes we have a tendency to just single out our PD, but I will say every department, they couldn't be more professional, not only with us as a board, but with our residents, who we are all here to work for. So, I thank you staff for everything you've done. I know this part of your job isn't always easy, but continue, please continue to do a good job, as you've always done. Trustee Reardon, I am so, I'm gonna miss you so much. You know, he really shines that you don't see, the audience doesn't see. Where he shines at is in closed session with the really, really hard stuff. He has an incredible way of breaking it down, so a now non-law person like me, with Dennis Walsh's help, but breaks it down so I understand it. And I'm gonna miss you, and I appreciate you, and I thank you for everything you gave to Orland Park specifically. Thank you, Trustee Reardon.
Trustee Radziewski.
Well, that's hard. Now I wanna cry. Thanks, Cindy. So, I'm definitely gonna second what Sean said. Thank you very much. And Carol, thank you for your kind words. And thank you, everybody, for just being here tonight and for your support. It really does mean a lot. Um, it goes a long way. This is- This is often a thankless job, so when you actually do hear those, those kind words of thank you, it's, it's very, very meaningful, and I truly appreciate it. And I know that the members of this board that are staying on are going to continue to do what's best for the village like they've always done, and they're going to continue to do that. I have total, complete faith in them, and, you know, I definitely want to also say thank you for, you know, all that you've done, Brian, and I appreciate you.
Thank you. Trusty Healy.
I was unaware that this was Brian's last time to give me a hard time, so I was, this is a, but Brian, you know, Cindy, you spoke, right, in executive session, Brian is always a star. I mean, I just wrote down, he's honest, he's common sense he's blessed with, his legal knowledge is deep, and his sense of humor is, eh. But, but he always put Orland Park first, and he, it's, I'm just so in awe and respect, and I will miss you, but mostly for your honesty and, you know, frank opinions in there. Well, you serve the village well, and I appreciate it. For my, for my own comments now, the, a couple weeks ago, we had to say to the union, and I was appalled by the Democrats refused to stand up and acknowledge the kid with, you know, wanted to be a policeman with the brain, after brain surgery, the mothers of the people who'd been slain by the illegal aliens, just common sense things that your heart breaks for, that they could not acknowledge anything. They, total lack of love and stone-cold, you know, hey, the, and, you know, when I, and I think of what happens around here, there's people during campaigns and all that, that you see blatant lies and this, and some people just don't come out and say that's a, that's a lie because their side is maybe benefiting from it, and that, that pisses me off, too. The, but I will say that as we go forward here, I will, I will applaud any good, sound things that come out from, as we go forward, and I'll try and raise an objection when things don't, don't make sense to me. So, you know, we will all, we promised, we promised when we first took it on to be honest with each other. We also promised to use our conscience, vote our conscience, and to put the people of Orland first, and we will continue to do that, and I'm sure Orland Park will be fine in the future. Thanks.
So I too found out that this would be Trusty Reardon's last meeting, so I didn't really have anything prepared necessarily, but, one, he had to have a sense of humor to sit next to Bill. And, and I echo Cindy's comments that he's been a very valuable member. Every member of this board is valuable, but Brian had been a very valuable member. Everyone brings different things to the table here, and what everyone should know is nobody here, you know, despite what you may hear, nobody here benefits back. I think everyone here loses, Brian certainly does, income and revenue potential and all that for sitting on this board, and they give of themselves, and they give their time, and Brian has, has four kids, you know, that, only one now is off in college, so, but they were all in the house, and so that's giving up a lot of time to serve the community, and that's fantastic. He's also my, my golf partner in the two-man, so now that we're not on the board anymore, maybe we'll actually accomplish something and get past the second round. But it's been, I roped him into it, and then I roped him into it again, to run again, and, and he stepped up, because a lot of people didn't, and so, you know, for that, I'm extremely proud of him, I'm thankful, and the board, and the people of Orland Park should be thankful because he's been an absolutely fantastic trustee, and I'm proud to call him my friend, and I'm going to turn it over to Trusty Reardon.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll be very brief. Thank you all for your comments, for your friendship. I came into this with not a whole lot of knowledge, but, you know, working with all of you has been, it's been a pleasure, it's been a learning experience. I 100% agree that every one of you does this for the right reason. There's nothing personal. There's not been one time in four years that someone has come to me and said, hey, I got this friend or this contractor, I got this person I want to hire, nothing like that, nothing like you hear in other governments, and that's refreshing that we all have the same goal all the time. I was going to be gone that meeting, whether we won or lost, so I hope that's not any comments that someone starts writing about. I'm going to be gone with my daughter, so I wouldn't have been here even if we, if we would have won. I want to thank the people of Orland Park for putting trust in me for four years. I hope I served you well. I tried to do the right things for the right reasons. I think we got a lot accomplished. There was a lot in the pipeline when I came on the board, but a lot of them were still in kind of a, you know, an uncertain state, and I think we pushed through on a lot of those things, so I hope I helped out a little bit with that. Again, my next comment was going to thank all you, but you kind of all took the, made all the comments there. I'm proud to call you all friends. I think Orland Park is still in good stead. I think Sean and myself and Joni, I know from, you know, where she will continue to be, we will be working hard to, in our roles wherever we can as, as good citizens to help out. I want to thank my family, Keith mentioned it. I'm gone a lot for a lot of other reasons, too, so this was just another reason to be out of the house, so I thank them for putting up with me, and, and then finally, I want to thank the staff. It was mentioned a couple of times, but I think I mentioned it at least four or five times over the four years about how dedicated and how professional our staff is. That was something I didn't know, I didn't really realize, you know, just being a citizen of Orland, you don't realize the professional nature and how serious our staff takes their jobs, how hard they work at it, how they want to do the right thing, and just, I was impressed time and time and time again at the board floor and executive session, the research they did, the solutions they came up with. So we're in really good shape. I would hope that that all continues with the, the new board because our staff is, is excellent. It's a great town to work for, it seems. I think it is. I hope we make it that way. So, again, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate it, and good luck to Orland Park going forward.
Thank you. So we obviously have two board meetings to make comments, so I'm going to make some tonight that need to be on the record, people need to understand, they need to pay attention. And, you know, say the least, the past week's been interesting for, for many of us. It has truly been an honor and a privilege to serve as the mayor of my hometown. When I was elected, when I got into office, I was shocked by the financial condition and the infrastructure of the village once I got into office. Our technology was nonexistent, our hiring and employment practices were the worst I've ever seen, and they were riddled with patronage, automatic raises, there were no performance reviews, but we changed that. Today, we have the best-in-class IT systems. Thank you for IT and for everyone for helping implement that. Our parks and road infrastructure are decades ahead of where they would have been, so thank you to all of our staff for making that happen, from financially to, to implementing the project, from engineering, parks and rec and, and public works. And we've accomplished all of this while lowering our debt. So, but most importantly, we shifted the culture. We shifted the culture from one of patronage to one based on production, based on competence and based on merit. And I say "we" very deliberately. This community has been served by a board filled with some of the most dedicated and professional people I've ever worked with. They bring tremendous talent, skill, and most importantly, character. Not a single one of them played politics ever. They solve problems, they did the right thing. For the first time in over 50 years, Orland Park had a board where there was not one person on it that was self-interested. While many good people have served before, from at least 1974 until 2021, we have never had a board where everyone was simply in it to serve. When people ask me what my greatest accomplishment was as mayor, I say without hesitation, it was recruiting these individuals to serve. One day, the people of the Orland Park will look back and recognize that this board, along with the one from the early 1970s, should be the model for future boards. Regarding the most recent election, it's clear I lost because I refused to call for ceasefire in the Middle East, because I, and I, because I opposed Hamas. People brought a religious war over 6,000 miles away that has been ongoing for a few millennia, was brought here to Orland Park. Let that sink in. This happened in Orland Park, Illinois. Despite that, I am very deeply thankful. Over the last eight years, I stood between the people of Orland Park and some very, very dark forces, at a great personal cost. My wife bore the brunt of this, too. She stood strong because she understood the impact we were making. I've heard this talk for the last six months of, about bringing civility back, but what it really means is, now that they're in charge, they'll stop trying to destroy the town and those running it. When I took office on Monday, May 15th, 2017, by the next morning, a trustee had already filed criminal complaints against me. At the Attorney General's office right now, there's 1,358 pages of complaints against me since I've been mayor. And I later learned that your incoming mayor, someone I once considered a friend, had filed a criminal complaint against me during the campaign itself. Day one. He didn't stop there. Along with his handpicked village manager, he led a secret investigation and levied more false charges. He accused me and three trustees remaining on the board of criminal wrongdoing for investing in our roads. These and other baseless accusations persisted for the two years that they got on the board, and I'm sorry that Mike, Bill, and Cindy had to deal with it. That is what they now call civility. In these years, I've been subject, I've been the subject of over 140 defamatory robocalls. My wife received anonymous letters and robocalls that jeopardized her safety and her career just because she's married to me, the mayor. Throughout the recent campaign, Sean Morrison, Trusty Katzenas, and I received anonymous threats. The entire board and others were targeted with extortion emails and fabricated videos, videos that were released on community forums and social media. Investigations are ongoing, but in Cook County, closure is rare. Boxes and documents were stuffed in my mailbox. A glitter bomb was sent to our deputy police chief's desk. A swatting call was made to the suicide hotline in our deputy chief's home. Flyers falsely accusing Trusty Healy and his family of theft and other heinous acts were distributed. One person, Mike Henry, was convicted for some of this. He is currently facing a civil lawsuit from the village. And by the way, making these comments because these texts and robocalls have continued against Sean Morrison and Cindy Katzenas because they're still in office. More than two dozen lawsuits have been filed against me, the board, and others, over 90% from Mike Henry. Since 2019, Mike Henry has filed complaints against over 85 people, including elected officials, judges, government agencies, and business owners. He's alleged over 39 crimes, ranging from fraud to pedophilia. He sent over 250 FOIA requests that poor Alex has had to deal with, and was a source for many of the attacks used by my opponent during the campaign. This is the man they base their corruption narrative on that we heard about today. A convicted felon who was once threatened, who once threatened a federal judge and IRS agents. These attacks went after Trusty Malani's wife and kids, Bill Healy's family, my brother, my children, and even my deceased father. What we experienced over the past eight years can be described by three words. Bullying, which is aggressive behavior meant to intimidate or harm. Mobbing, which is a deliberate attempt to force a person out of their workplace by humiliation, general harassment, emotional abuse, and/or terror. Gang stalking, which is coordinated and repeated harassment by a group organized around a shared purpose with no one person solely responsible. I fought back because it's in my DNA, but frankly, I'm thankful to be relieved of that burden. The behavior from these weasels and miscreants is the reason many good people never run for office. I still believe most people in Orland Park do not support this kind of behavior, but also, too many chose not to engage, hoping to stay involved. Let me remind everyone in Orland Park, the bullies, mobs, and gangs eventually come for everyone. As Edmund Burke said, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." For eight years, I stood up for you. The outgoing trustees did it for four, and thank you to Joni, Sean, and Brian for that. Cindy and Mike and Bill have done it for six, and they're going to be your voice for two more, but a few people can't hold back the mob forever. It truly does take a village, and this is your village. Now it's your turn. Pay attention. Hold them accountable. Don't let the graft and the grifters return. In two weeks, I'll outline our achievements over the last eight years. It'll be a lot more positive than this. There's a lot to be proud of. You've heard a lot of it tonight from the board, but whether that progress continues, it really isn't up to Bill, Mike, and Cindy, certainly not up to the four of us that are leaving, it's up to you. And I hope you pay attention, hold them accountable, and keep our village moving forward. Thank you. I'll entertain a, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty Compass.
I move to go into executive session for a, discussion of the minutes of closed meetings, b, pending litigation against affecting or on behalf of the village or when found by the board that such action is probable or imminent.
Second. Call the roll.
Trusty Compass?
Aye.
Trusty Katzenas?
Aye.
Trusty Healy?
Aye.
Trusty Malani?
Aye.
Trusty Reardon?
Aye.
Trusty Raschewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pecov?
Aye.
Move to executive session. Jeff, we may be...